December meeting at the Wood County Board of Supervisors to order. I, the clerk has informed me that he has taken the role. I have the invocation today, but before I do the invocation, I just wanted to, normally I don't talk a lot at a county board meeting, but at this holiday season, it's a time where typically you look back, you reflect on your personal life, your professional life, the accomplishments, the failures, the successes, and you look at, you know, your aspirations for the following year. And I have the opportunity throughout the year to get to a number of county board meetings around the state. And I have the privilege when I go somewhere of being able to talk about our board, and we are recognized for having a board that works together. That's congenial. We don't always agree on every issue, but I don't think that anybody would argue that when it's done, you know, that's the vote, that's the way it goes. And we are extremely lucky in that regard. I was recently out in DC and I had a county board chairman from another state, but actually said to me, you talk to your sheriff? I said, absolutely. They said, you can talk to your state legislators? I said, almost every day, especially one of them. But what we have here in Wood County is really special, but especially because of all the people who sit on this floor and all those departments has a, I have the privilege of working with, day in and day out. You make it easy, and it's greatly appreciated. So like I said, as we get to this time of year, this holiday season, when you have a, it is just a time of year where you reflect, you look back and you go, were we successful? Were we not? Where were our accomplishments? Where were our failures? And how do we do better? I just want to wish you all a very successful coming year, and I want to thank you for the accomplishments that we have this year. So just wanted to say that before I got started, because I'd probably forget by the end. So if you would prefer, if I were your guys, to join us in today's invocation. I would ask you to rise, and then we will remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. As we gather today during this joyous holiday season, let's take a moment to reflect on the spirit of this special time of year. In the midst of our deliberations and decisions, may we be mindful of the values that bring us together as a community. Let us be grateful for the diversity that enriches our county and the strength that comes from our unity. During this holiday season, often a time of hope and celebration, may we find inspiration to work collaboratively for the betterment of all those we serve. In the spirit of goodwill and understanding, let our decisions be guided by compassion and a commitment to everyone. May the warmth of the holiday season remind us of the importance of kindness, generosity, and the bonds that connect us as neighbors and as fellow citizens. As we navigate the challenges and opportunities before us, let us also remember those in our community who may be facing difficulties during this time of year. May our efforts contribute to creating a community where everyone can experience the spirit of the season regardless of their circumstance. In the spirit of togetherness, let us proceed with open hearts and open minds. May the decisions we make today reflect our shared commitment to a brighter and more successful future for all. Lord, we offer this invocation with gratitude and with a prayer for the safety of those who defend and protect us both here and around the world, and for a shared hope for a peaceful, joyous holiday season. Amen. If you'd please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I guess the first order of business is to dispose of the minutes from the previous meeting. I have a motion by Hamilton, I have a second by LaFontaine. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Any discussion? All in favor of approval, please signify by aye. Opposed, and that motion carries. We have no excusals today under resignations. We have Carmen Good from the Farm Service Agency Representatives to the seat committee. I would entertain a motion in regard to her resignation by Buckey, second by Hamilton. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by aye. And opposed, and that motion carries. Under appointments today, we have a couple of those. The escrow review board for the city of Marshfield, our finance director, Ed Newton, would be appointed, and the seat committee as the ad producer member with the term ending in April of 2024, Joe Baylor. I have a motion by Condenning, a second by Lightner. Is there any discussion on those appointments? Any discussion? Again, all in favor, signify by aye. And opposed, and that motion carries. Do I have any public comment today? Any public comment today? And I'll make a quick public comment, then as we're getting into election season, I think most of the county board supervisors have decided to run for office again, but I want to thank, and I know there's a few months of service left. I know Supervisor Fisher's indicated he's relocating out of the county at some point. Adam, I know we got a number of months to work together, but if that's the decision going forward, appreciate your service. And I understand this morning Supervisor Winch has filed non-candidacy. And Bill, your years of service have been incredible, unmatched, and you've just done a heck of a job, and I'd appreciate a round of applause. You're going to hear it again, but I wanted to recognize that. When that information comes out, I didn't want to hear people getting that trickled out somewhere. Bill, again, thank you very much. So we have no other public comment? All right, then we're going to move into acknowledgements and recognitions. And while I'm standing up here, we have one employee that we're going to recognize publicly this morning, and that is from the Health Department. I have a call through Smith, the director of our Health Department. Please come forward. And soon while you're coming forward, I'd ask the clerk to please read the resignation. It's the last one in your packet.
This will be Resolution 23-12-1 to recognize the Wood County employees for years of devoted and faithful service to Wood County.
I have a motion to approve by Hamilton, second by Wagner. All those in favor, see to it by aye. All right, thank you. That carried unanimously. Sue, it's yours.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. I am honored to present this 25-year service award to Kate Harrison, who is an environmental health specialist with the Health Department. She actually started in planning and zoning back in 1999, and 2005 was a great year because that's the year Kate and I both joined the Wood County Health Department. Kate is a leader within our environmental health program. She is what is referred to as the program standard for our retail food program, which basically means that she works with her teammates to ensure they're all conducting their work in a consistent manner that is in alignment with the current food regulations. Kate works on our environmental health team that not only serves Wood County, but also Adams and Juneau Counties. She conducts inspections of a variety of facilities like restaurants, hotels, motels, campgrounds, public swimming pools, to name a few, and she also follows up on human health hazards, which is kind of like a box of chocolates. You never really know what you're going to get with those things. Kate has done a lot through her years here. One vivid picture that her, some of her teammates mentioned to me that I still have of Kate is this photo of her standing there with a smile on her face, and she's soaking wet, like basically from her waist down, because she went to investigate a human health hazard in a basement, and between the lack of light and all the, like, stuff, we'll just call it stuff, around, she fell into like this sump hole with some unknown liquid covering the lower half of her body, and she was standing there smiling.
Gross. I know.
Kate stepped up to work on our COVID testing strike team during the pandemic and also conducted case investigations and phone triage during the pandemic. Her willingness to step outside of her environmental health role was very much appreciated during what was a very challenging time for all of us. She's involved in the Wisconsin Environmental Health Association and also serves as our radon information center coordinator. Kate's a wonderful cook. She goes mushroom hunting, has a garden, makes incredible salsa, and whips up the best soups that I've ever had. So I asked Kate's teammates, they're sitting in the back there, to share how they would describe Kate. So here is what Kate's teammates said about her. Kate has a great way of building relationships with our operators. She is friendly and has a passion for the environmental health field. She enjoys educating others, and if she doesn't have the answer, she'll find it. She's always supportive and encouraging. Kate is very passionate about what she does. She's always there to help, whether it's coworkers or the public. If she doesn't know the answer, she'll find it. She's a wealth of information. Kate is passionate about environmental health, and she tries to help others as much as she can. Kate puts an emphasis on providing education and tries to put a positive spin on the enforcement side of things. I'd like to learn how you do that. Kate has a friendly demeanor that makes her always approachable. She's a go-to resource for the team, always ready to offer her assistance despite her extensive tenure, Kate remains open to change. Kate is a caring individual that truly improves the health of the community through her work. She provides food safety trainings for restaurants throughout the county to help operators stay up to date on the newest food code requirements and best practices. Her experience in environmental health is an asset to her team as well as the community. She often goes above and beyond, or in our case, into the deepest, darkest crop spaces, often filled with cobwebs, to uncover root causes of whatever complaints come her way. Okay, I'm going to end with one story that one of her teammates told me, so a law enforcement professionals, just tune me out. Think about your Christmas list or something. So this person said, the only real story I have, that I have, has to do with her driving style. In the traffic world, Kate's left foot is a force to be reckoned with. Behind the wheel, her eco-friendly persona takes a backseat as she navigates the roads with an intensity that would make any NASCAR driver blush. Watching calm, cool, and collected Kate transform into a road warrior is quite a sight. She turns any routine commute into an unintentional thrill ride. Buckle up, because Kate is on a mission and is pedal to the metal.
Not waste many taxpayer money.
So I would like to just wrap up my thanking Kate, and what I appreciate most about you, Kate, is your positive attitude and your sense of humor, even when you face life-changing challenges. And I only hope if I'm faced with the things you've gone through, that I'll respond with the same courage and grit that you have.
I just wanted to say that I started as an intern, and I am grateful that you guys have the intern programs and take the time to do those kinds of things for people that know that we don't know what we want to do in life. And now I host interns, and I'm glad that we are still continuing that. I hope that in the future you will keep a strong intern program. Thank you.
Thanks, Kate. Now is a much more in-depth story about the types of individuals that we are lucky enough to work with every day, and you'll find that across the comments. So Kate, thank you, and Sue, thank you for the presentation. Supervisor Zerflu, you had an announcement you wanted to make.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The county clerk sent out an email for me a couple weeks ago requesting for volunteers to give the invocation during 2024, and it's my lucky day, I did not receive any contacts. So if you have any interest in giving the invocation this coming year, please see me after the meeting. If not, I will use the authority as chaplain, and I will just assign people. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So if you want to line up, first 12 are going to get those slots. The rest here are just out to the follow your own.
And you did a great job.
All right, as we move forward into the packet, page five is the referrals for December. There were three of those. Two went to the Judicial Legislative Committee, the third just went to the County Board of Supervisors, appropriate places. As we move into the minutes, page six, minutes of the annual county budget hearing and Operations Committee meeting on November 14th. That is six. The Operations Committee meeting of Tuesday, December 5th is on pages seven, eight, and nine. We have letters of comment from the county clerk's office. You didn't note on here, but they had a heck of a buffet going down there last week when I walked in. I think you probably had 500 people walk through there, but from the county clerk's office. We begin on page 11, goes to page 15, and that's the monthly letter of comments from the Human Resources Department. Monthly comments from the Treasurers Office on 16, from Wellness on 17, and then that brings us to the first resolution in the packet.
This will be Resolution 23-12-2 to accept offer of sale of tax-deed property. Fiscal note, the offered amount minus real estate taxes, special charges, delinquent utilities, and tax deed expense net us a loss of $42,478.08.
A motion by Condenning, a second by Bride. Is there any discussion on the resolution? Any discussion? All right, I'd ask you to vote. Resolution passed 19-0. Thank you, Trump. Moving forward in the packet, we have two resolutions to amend the county budget, pages 19 and 20. Is there any objection to taking those together? Any objection? Mr. Clerk?
This will be Resolution 23-12-3 to amend the 2023 Adams-Juno budget for the purpose of funding higher-than-anticipated expenditures. Fiscal note, no cost to Wood County. The adjustment to the budget totals $25,000. Resolution 23-12-4 to amend the 2023 WIC budget for the purpose of funding higher-than-anticipated expenditures. Fiscal note, no cost to Wood County. The adjustment to the budget totals $10,000.
A motion by Supervisor Fisher, a second by Supervisor Hamilton. Is there any discussion on either one of these resolutions? Any discussion? Again, let's proceed to vote. Resolution passes 19-0. All right, as we move forward, we have minutes of the Health and Human Services Committee, their meeting from November 16 on 21, 22, and 23. North Central Community Action, their minutes on 24 and 25. We have an update from the Wood County Health Department, their monthly letter of comments beginning on 26, and those run through page 29. From the Human Services Department, beginning with Director Ruhnberg, on 30, and runs through page 36, 30 through 36. Give me a second to catch up there. And then as we move forward on page 37, the minutes of the Public Safety Committee from Monday, November 13th, and that's 37, 38, and 39. Their minutes from December 11th on 40, 41, and 42. The Traffic Safety Commission meeting, 43, 4, and 5. All right, now we're on page 46, and that's the Central Records Committee meeting of June 15th, and that begins on page 46 and 47. And then, I got these all stapled together, they didn't fall apart. I have the work from the Sheriff's Department, and they did fall apart, runs from pages 48 to 74, 48 to 74. It's a lot of pages. Does anybody have any questions there? Make any notes or highlight anything? And then that brings us to the resolution on page 75. I'd ask the clerk, please read the resolution.
This will be Resolution 23-12-5 to increase the cremation fee and death certificate signature fee in the coroner's office. Fiscal note, approximately $6,500 per year increase in revenues.
A motion by Hamilton, a second by Zerflu. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Again, that resolution passed 19-0. All right, as we move forward, page 76 begins the minutes of the seat committee from December 6th, it runs through page 79, 76 through 79. We have the North Central ITBC Board meeting on 80 and 81. We have the update from UW Extension, 82 through 86, 82 through 86. We had some pretty interesting stats and statistics, or statistics, not stats and statistics, are the same thing, but we had some really good information here in regard to the Wood County Clean Sweep, their results, beginning on 87, it runs through 93, and that's a program that I hope we continue to run. I think it does a lot of good in the community. Beginning on page 94 and running through page 99 is the monthly activity report for the Land and Water Conservation Department. Again, that's 94 to 99. The Citizens Water Group, their meeting of November 13th, on page 100. We have the update from the Planning and Zoning Office, beginning with Director Runenberg's on 101, 102, and 103. And then that brings us to the resolution in your packet. It is on page 104, and the accompanying information runs through page 107. I'd ask the clerk, please read the resolution.
This will be Resolution 23-12-6 to amend the county supervisory district map for districts 14 and 15 to reflect annexation by the city of Wisconsin Rapids. Fiscal note, none.
I have a motion by Hamilton, and a second by Bride. I have discussion. Laura, Supervisor Hamilton, say it.
Thank you. I will make a motion to amend the therefore-be-it-resolved portion of the resolution to match the legal description of the ordinance filed and recorded in the Register of Deeds office.
Okay, a motion to amend is second by Supervisor Zerflu. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Any discussion on the amendment? All in favor of the amendment, please signify by aye. All right, let's go back to the resolution as amended. Any discussion on the resolution as amending? Any discussion? All right, I ask you to please vote. Again, the resolution passed 19-0. 19-0. All right, as we move forward, page 108 in the packet, the Judicial and Legislative Committee from December 7th begins on 108 and goes through 109. There's a handwritten claim for damages on 110. The update from the Child Support Agency on 111. The Clerk of Courts on 112. Court Counsel on 113. Registered in Probate on 114. Registered deeds office on 115. For those who have been on the board a long time ago, we used to have reports, and we didn't have those summaries that came from these departments, and I just find this a lot more helpful. If anybody else for some reason doesn't, let us know, but I think that's, those monthly letter of comments have been so much more helpful than just getting a bunch of statistics that roll in front of us every month. If I go on to the Highway Committee meeting from Friday, November 10th, that's pages 116, 17, and 18. Their minutes from November 28th on page 119. Same committee, their minutes from December 7th, 120, 21, and 22. And then we have the monthly report from the Highway Commission, beginning with Commissioner Hawkes on 123, and those run through 128, 123 to 128. Monthly update from Park and Forest Street, beginning with Director Schoolies, 129 through 135, 129 to 135. From the Property Information Technology Committee, their minutes from December 4th, 136, 37, and 38. The monthly letter of comments and updates from IT, 139 through 142. The update from our facilities manager, Ruben Van Tassel, on 143. And frankly, I'll make a comment there, too. I can't believe that everything he does fits on a page, because I meet with him fairly often, and there's no way in the world everything that's happening right now with the new jail and some of the other things fits on a page, but that's the update. The Central Wisconsin State Fair Group, their minutes on October 16th on 144 and 145, 144, 145. The Marshfield Fairgrounds Commission meeting on 146. The South Central Library System Board of Trustees, their meeting of 1026 on 147 and 148. I have minutes of the UW Commission, their meeting from August 10th on 149. We had a pretty, you know, one of the concerns that we have going forward is what they're doing with the two-year campuses in the state of Wisconsin. I know the UW system, the state legislature, the governor's office, we've been working on this. It's just been a primary issue for the Counties Association as well, but Supervisor Roser, you might want to add this. I thought we had a very productive conversation the other day as to the direction that we may go with the Marshfield campus and the county facility. Do you want to make a comment to that? Because I think it's important that people know, you know, what occurred during that conversation.
So the president of the UW system sent out a letter to all the chancellors that have two-year colleges. Well, they used to be the two-year colleges, now they're the umbrella colleges. And as a lot of you all may know, three of those campuses have been repurposed. And so we do not, we've put a lot of investment in our UW Stevens Point at Marshfield, which a lot of us still call the Wood. We shouldn't, but the president sent out a letter to the chancellors, so Chairman Plummel and myself and Tony Andrews, Dr. Andrews from the campus, we all had a meeting. And I thought that Chancellor Gibson laid out a very good plan as to what they strategically are thinking about what to do with our campus. So we're going to have Dr. Andrews come in the next few months to explain how we can protect the investment that we have. They have some really good ideas with getting more people on the campus. I don't know how many of you all went to the play this weekend in the Helen Connor Laird, but that art place is just a wonderful place, and the Laird Foundation, Helen Connor Laird was Mel Laird's mother, and they have a foundation that supports this theater that they named in her name. So they're getting ready to invest a significant amount of money to put new chairs in there and to do some upgrades. You may have seen in the Hub City Times that Nelson Jameson, I think it was, just donated $10,000 to the campus, and that money will be used for scholarships and for upgrades and things like that. So I just want you all to be assured that there is a plan to protect the investment that we have made in that campus over the years. You all know that we borrowed $1 million to put the STEM building in, the city borrowed $1 million. So our significant investments need to be protected, and we need to make sure that there is a strategic plan to do so. You know, that campus is about 92 acres, and when you think about that, it's like 92 acres right there on the west side of town. That's a significant piece of property. So I appreciate you, I was going to say you coming up, but I appreciate you participating in the meeting, and I was just very, very pleased with what was presented by Chancellor Gibson. Chancellor Gibson happened to be the chancellor of UW Stevens Point, if you don't remember that, and then Dr. Andrews is the campus director. So we will hear from those folks in the next several months and be able to ask some questions about what their overall plan is to protect our investment in that property. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm still upset at the fact that it was brought up here today. Why Wood County's name is not on that? We spent the $1 million, the city of Marshfield spent the $1 million on the STEM building. I myself went out and got money for the STEM building through the unions and things like that. And then what did they do? Take the name off? I'm really upset about that. I really am. Why can't it go on? What made them take our name off, Wood County? It's the same way with the fair situation. I think if we're going to contribute to the fair, it should be Wood County Fair, Marshfield Fair, Central Wisconsin. I'm just, I'm upset about it, and I will not ever vote for money going to the university because of that.
Thank you, Bill. I guess the commonality was I was encouraged by the meeting. One of the things I've seen, several of these down in Addison, where as they closed the Richland Center campus, when they went originally virtual to Infinead in Washington County, what was going to happen, because as Supervisor Roser stated, we made a significant investment in that property, and there are some real symbiotic relationships and advantages that can be taken advantage of there because of the Marshfield clinic and some of the healthcare we have in the area. There are a lot of those two-year campuses that are in fear right now that they're going to pull the plug on those. The Counties Association is working on some legislation whereby that can't just occur, where they just tell you tomorrow we're going to close. There's a, you know, a lot of these counties are anticipating or looking at additional spend on these campuses, and you don't want to spend $1 million, $5 million, and then have them tell you they're going to close it next year. So they're looking at at least legislation that would create a time buffer where those things could be accounted for. But in our particular instance, I was, I didn't know what to think when we went into the meeting. We've had some preliminary discussion, but I came out of there extremely encouraged. I had made a couple notes before we started the meeting. I said, education, higher education in the state of Wisconsin needs to be, you know, blended. You need to be able to transition between the tech schools and the universities, and at the end of the day, it has to be available to whether that be high school students coming out or lifelong learners, adults transitioning into other professions or looking for additional education. I came out of that meeting here in cooperation with all involved, those people at the campus, those people in Stevens Point, the tech schools, and them saying, we can utilize this space. We're going to make sure it's not empty. Now, that guarantees nothing but verbal, but I was really highly encouraged when I heard that that campus is going to be utilized into the future. So I wanted to update you, because you hear things around the state using these, there's not that, I have not heard that immediacy where they have need to do that with that campus. So that was that. All right, minutes, that was the UW Commission I wanted to add to that. I go to the Jail Ad-Hoc Committee, Jail Construction Ad-Hoc Committee, their minutes on 150 and 151, and they have a meeting to immediately follow this meeting. Are you done on 114?
Yep.
Done on 114?
115.
115. You're getting windows today if you go to a meeting. All right, that takes me to the end of the packet. Our next...
Our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, January 16th, January 16th. Is there anything that needs to come before this board, anything for the good of the order? Again, I want to wish you all, you know, a Merry Christmas, a happy holiday season. Like I said, it's that time of year where you tend to, we tend to be more generous. We tend to look back, we try to think of others maybe more than we do the rest of the year. And my, I guess my charge to everybody is try to do that all year and continue to keep our community one of the best places in the state of Wisconsin. So with that being said, if there's nothing else to come for us, I will declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you.